I got it, yep.
All right, we call meeting order, please silence your cell phones. Stand for the question. Have plans to leave to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, yes, add the other comment down on number five. Michelle's back. Is this for me? Yes.
Hey, please go ahead.
Okay.
All right, we'll go down to the business. Uh, proving the purchase of property from the water treatment facility. Right now, that is about the only location that we've got, this is suitable for that. Um, and what really nice is it's not too far from the main line and from our other lines to run into it, run back. Um. And Michelle has got, well, got some pictures of what they look like, really nice, I've seen the one over in the, over that coast. And I was very impressed with the building.
So, um, I turned these, um, uh, kind of blue board into Anderson Perry. So that so the building would, um, be multifunctional and not ugly.
Excuse me, could you explain exactly what you're talking about, water treatment or to purify our city water, is that what you're talking about?
Is it gonna improve the quality of our water to tolerate the garbage?
Yeah, it is definitely an improvement.
That's what we're trying to clean up, yeah.
Hold, hold on, Ray.
That's why we're putting this in.
Ray, Ray, I'll answer the questions on the plant, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor. Um, that is exactly what it's for, it's for the drinking water, it's not a sewage treatment plant. So, I, I've heard some talk that that's what a lot of people in here think it is. It's not a sewage treatment plant, it is a drinking water treatment facility. It runs with, uh, very low to almost no noise. It'll be all contained in either block.
Cause I live right next to it, Kurt and I actually.
It would be in the middle of a neighborhood.
I, I know exactly where it's going.
I know, me too, I live by the press street.
It's gonna be back.
Is it gonna be chemicals?
No.
No chemicals or treated?
There'll, there'll be self gen- there'll be self-generated chlorine, which runs at zip, uh, point zero eight, which is basically bleach. And that's, we're not using, um, what it was called, uh, chlorine gas because it's too dangerous and I don't want it down. So we decided to go with self-generated chlorine, which the only thing that will be on site that's any hazardous is gonna be salt.
And so we've decided that we're putting this in a residential area next to baseball fields that are atrocious looking and not taken care of. And right across the street from my house, is that where it's gonna be?
No.
Right across the street from my house.
From your house?
It's, yeah, there's, where you guys live, I know where both of you live, right across from that is another piece of property, and it's behind that piece of property.
It's beside your property?
Yeah, it's right there by it.
So that would be my question as far as noise, could we use that for, um, courses and drinking and livestock?
Noise level is very low.
So, and it's like, I do have a question about this, I just said, well, like, for party on this. Um, so it's gonna clean the water, but then where's it gonna store the water at, like, how would you our water kinda go this way through town, so how would you be able to store it then to reuse this water?
It's not stored, it comes out of the plant, it goes over to Well Nine, which is at the corner of Second and, is that S?
Yes.
S Street, and it's pumped up to the tank.
And where's the scum gonna go that's taken out of the water?
The backwash water actually goes back through and it's filtered again and reused, the way that the filter system works.
Oh, where does the scum go that you guys were taking out of the water?
There isn't. You end up, you end up, it goes through media, and which, once the media is spent, as they call it, which is about every five to eight years, the media would pull it out, load it in a dump truck, haul it away, new media will be put in. There's nothing there.
So if you say minimal noise.
Minimal noise.
Which is what?
You probably will, you probably will not hear it outside the building.
I know what I mean. I probably.
From your house, you won't hear it.
Okay, where's it gonna be on that, on that?
You won't hear it from your house.
From my house?
Uh, probably not.
What about the smell?
Okay, where's it gonna be exactly in that build?
It's gonna be in the, closer to the little home part, in that back corner, over that direction.
And that's right across from me?
Where, you're, I thought you were over by Calda's house.
I'm up from Calda, I'm right across from John Flynn's.
Yeah, it's gonna be completely on the other side of the field from you.
By the railroad track?
Closer to the railroad tracks, yes.
And how large are you partial, are you talking?
It's, I think it's twenty-one point seven acres.
So, you're taking in that entire?
We have to buy the whole piece, but the building's gonna be.
So is anything else going in there, houses, homes?
No.
I was told homes today.
Everybody was told a lot of things and that they're getting this information. At this point, we're building a water treatment facility, there may be in the future, Public Works may be moved over there, but that's all that is planned right now.
Okay, so what's the odds of getting my home watched?
Buy it to town.
Something, why should I, this is the third go.
It's not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect the value of your home.
I mean, this is not fun anymore.
But if you own that, you're gonna eventually, you're gonna use it up, you, we know.
Most of that property's in the floodplain, so there's not a whole.
It is in the floodplains, cause we had that a few years ago and it was totally flooded.
Yes.
Scott, Kirby has questions.
Yes, Kirby.
Uh, why did you choose this particular piece of property, cause it is kinda surrounded by residential every side, like, it is kinda right in town.
Because of the location and if, we looked at some other property, but all of it was in the floodplain, and the other stuff that was available was so far out, the cost of running pipe to tie in right there at Well Nine would've, who wouldn't be able to build a plant?
What about kind of, uh, I say this very kindly, a junkyard there on the corner, no offense, Calda's, even closer to Calda's.
I know, went at home.
But where it wouldn't be so, I just, I'm just thinking, like, as the town continues to grow, I think that's kind of everyone's goal, it seems like it's a prime area for residential homes and such, and instead we're kinda like painting out the center of town for not, and I totally agree that we need to have this facility, we do need to work on the town water, it's off, you're taking that on, but it just seems like this is a primary for our town to expand and to grow, and we're really just like shocking it out of
Well, we, we looked at.
areas, schools, hospitals, downtown, it's such a prime area, it seems in terms of this is the best option.
Well, we looked at a couple of things, one, the location to the train tracks because of the noise of the train and everything else. We looked at what was in the floodplain, which is most of what is, uh, south and west of that property is floodplain. All the baseball fields and the whole area where it's all floodplain.
Well, how many of yous on floodplain?
Where are we putting it on Ninth Street where we did the sewage separation plant, that you were gonna put across the street?
There don't have, there, nobody's.
There's no room to put it there.
And what about, um, okay, so, is this right or straight across from me?
No, it's in the backside, no, you're, you're gonna be staggered from it.
Fine, hold on, what's it gonna do to our real estate value for selling?
I'm not a realtor, but I honestly would.
I mean, we got an industrial thing across the street from us.
You'll have a, you'll have a building across the street.
And there's no chance of spillage and, you know, contamination, spillage of the bleach and that
No, cause it's, it's stor- it's stored at a low quantity. The, uh, salt is all stored in a polytank, a double-walled polytank. So any kind of spillage or any kind of contamination is, is very low, very low.
Is there any way for you guys to only purchase a section of that ground? I guess from my perspective, being a young resident of this town, I don't like the idea, that you started to have it, I don't like the idea of putting it in the middle of town, that we've not taken out an area, like they did that housing development with their beautiful homes, and we've really not taken away an area to expand on all that country right there by moving other things into it, I would hope that we can maybe look, I know it's rocky and it's hard, right, but, and I'm a Mountain View resident. If this is so great, and there's no noise there, all right, that from that, we're, we're not residential on two sides of it.
Behind you.
That you basically Mountain View to the east of it, and then you have, uh, Roberta. Uh, you have the guys on the one-way Burger Street.
Oh.
That would be your other residential homes over there, but essentially, like, literally the ground you're looking at, you're residential on four sides of it, I guess if you take out the railroad but there's a good chunk of that corner over there that does have homes on it, it does, I just feel that this might not be the best use of some prime property in town. That there might be some other options to look at, just that we may just.
Well, to be used, the only way that anybody could go to build up this town a little bit, which is not wanted anyway, but is to go that way and start making some residential out there, I mean, this town's gonna die. This recession that's coming up is not gonna be good for Lakefield.
I agree that, you're gonna build that and then extend with other, other things.
And to.
What, what's gonna be next, and then what's gonna be next, and then what's gonna be next on this big piece of property? That's my concern too. Cause it's gonna be right there.
And working with chemicals on a daily basis, they call us fine-tuned avoider, I've worked with chlorine and all of that stuff, but I know exactly what it does to the environment. I know exactly what it does to the human body. I have four kids of my own, and it seemed to be another way, I don't wanna close them out.
That's why we're not using chlorine gas, we're doing self-generated.
I don't use chemical chlorine, that gas either. I, I still don't.
You're away with gas.
We are, we're, we're doing self-generated chlorine, which is a very, very low percentage of actual chlorine, it's bleached or less than.
I have a question. You have a well behind, uh, just south of, uh, roughly the county shot period that is that used very often, and where does the line, once it is being used, where does the water go?
Right there, we're Well Nine, which is a corner of Second and, uh, S Street.
You mean Third?
Third, Third and House, yeah.
Third and, yeah.
Third, Second and House, isn't it?
It's, actually it is Second and House.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I like you.
All right, there's a, county has a piece of property by just west of Roberta, where they had their man camp.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they have water, they put water and electricity in there already, and that sagebrush area, it's between, uh, uh, what's his name, uh, the, the junkyard there.
Yeah, it's over by the junkyard and the trailer parcel there.
And, and the, where the man camp was, county has a piece of property, is, is that been considered? If it's close to a line from Well Nine then, uh, why couldn't you?
Cause it's only a four-inch line, it's not big enough to bring all the wells into the treatment plant. We have to, we have to be close to the well, the line that runs to the tank, and that starts right there at Well Nine.
So, so usually when you're doing a project, right, you do, uh, you know, scenario A, B, C, D, and then you pick the best of them.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, have you, have you all done a study that, that lists out the pluses and the minuses for each of the options, like the one this gentleman mentions, and, and I, and I get it, that there's a, you know, there's a water line problem, so there'd be a cost of increasing the pipe, but maybe you don't have to buy land, right, which would offset some of the costs for the pipe, so, I guess what people here would like to know is that you cons- you considered all the spots and that, you know, you think that this particular parcel, which is in a residential neighborhood
Mm-hmm.
might have a minus for that reason, but, you know, in your case, or you think it is outweighed by the pluses, we would just like a chance to understand the way you understand why it's the very best site, that's, I think that's what all the questions are about.
It, it comes down to several things, and we did look at quite a few different pieces of property, and, um, it comes down to cost. That property being mostly in the floodplain is unbuildable land, or hard to build on, with a high cost to build anything on. We figured it wouldn't be that big of a deal, cause approximately in the train tracks, the plant makes very little, there's no noise outside the building, and that's, that's what we looked at.
Yeah, the comment you made earlier about later on moving the, um, Public Works, Public Works in there, well, that's additional stuff that's not being addressed came out more just on the sly, so you do have other plans that may be in the best interest of, uh, the neighborhood.
Possibility. If, if, I mean, if somebody came to us and offered us X amount of dollars to split that property and sell it, and wanted to put a housing development there, we would definitely consider it.
How would they get into it?
Right there, same place, where would we get into it, right off of Third?
Oh, nice.
All the way back to me.
So, so what is, you've got twenty-some light acres, what's the footprint of the plant itself?
Uh, we were, actually, I was talking to the engineer about that today, and he's figuring that it's probably gonna be about a sixty by a hundred-foot building.
But, yeah, but there's also parking lots and storage and all that, what's the footprint?
The, the footprint of the overall thing?
Yeah. How much of the twenty-one acres will you need?
Two and a half, three?
So, eighteen acres vacant.
Pretty much.
And the engineer has approved the property for the facility?
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that we've looked at is since it's in a floodplain, there's already a part of something that you can plan, is potentially another part of the town. Direct view on that, where the creek goes through, where the floodplains is, that's some of the stuff that we've been tossing around.
Well, put the park across the street from me, Wally Park and.
Then, then you're building the water treatment plant up against the subdivision.
Huh?
Then you're building the water treatment plant up against a branding subdivision. If you put a park directly across from you, you're not even in line with the property where we're at, you're down from it?
Uh-huh.
You're, you.
But I'm gonna be the one that absorbs the traffic, and what if there's, what if you guys, what if you guys flood over there?
Most of the traffic's gonna be on.
Are you just gonna wipe us over here all across the map? I've seen it flood out there.
I have too, I've been out there, I was out there in two thousand nineteen stacking sandbags.
Well, and way before then, my husband sat out in the front yard and shot that, it was that bad.
How many people's cars have been over there?
Two?
Two, so it'll be like two people going in.
Yeah, and tell if you're over there.
I don't know what they're doing over there today.
Well, I don't know about that.
That's, it's the future too, uh, because you had mentioned you were going to eventually add.
No, I said possibly move Public Works.
Possibly, well, that, that's a To us, it's like saying you are.
It's a lot different than me saying we are, no, it's not, it's possible.
Okay, but to us, how do we know you're not?
Well, there's a large cost to that, and the town can't endure that cost. Plus it gets a grant, it's money for the plant's a grant, yes.
What, what's the? What's the, what's the zoning on that site?
It is, uh, residential.
So you have to change the zoning in the town plan in order to put an industrial facility on that property?
It's the way that water plants are categorized can be done with a conditional use permit.
So, what's the difference between when my father and I wanted to put in a shop in residential, and we got turned down because of it, an actual mechanic shop? And we got turned down because of it, and you guys get rezoned, how's that any good?
It's not a rezone, it's a conditional use permit.
It's a conditional use permit, it's different.
There's a difference.
We're not rezoning, if we move the Public Works over there, we'd have to go through a whole rezoning deal, and we probably would not get approved for it, so. But i- it's rezoning, conditional use permit are two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
Rezoning and a conditional use permit are two different things.
Right.
Okay, so we're, I'm asking Burke this question, what is this going to do to our property values?
Um.
Especially mine again?
I, 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 I don't know that answer, but.
Let, let me ask you this, Calda, what does brown water do to your property value?
The brown water?
Mm-hmm.
I don't get it.
You will eventually, you will eventually.
And I'm good with that, let's dig this up, I, I, I have a fiancee that's an engineer for Keenwood out of life, I know what's in this water.
Mm-hmm.
And so we need that, I know, but in a residential area, I don't, I want, I need to sell my house in a few years.
Mm-hmm.
And I need it sold, you don't have to roll your eyes.
Yeah, that's not appropriate.
I paid my bill here all my life, I paid, I paid a bill out there for sewage that I never had for twenty years. I mean, this is the third go-around with me out there, and I'm ready to get rid of it, I just, what's next? I'd kinda like to be able to kinda see the hills a little bit, and right across the street from me and Cheryl right now is the biggest dump you've ever seen in your life, the ball fields aren't any better.
The ball fields are actually getting re-done this year.
Thank God, because we've got tourists that come here that are appalled, and then we've got.
Well, they got a grant, so it'll be lovely like that.
I'm worried about the ball fields, but.
But, no, but I just live on that corner of this disastrous build, and it's like, that need, that is. I need to be able to sell my house, I'm a single woman.
No, I, I, I understand that, Calda.
I don't want to live where you are.
We're not doing this to try to hurt anybody's property value or anything else, we're trying to bring your property values up and deal with the water issue in town. If we move it further out, with the cost of goods and inflation right now, we won't be able to afford to build it, and that's what it comes down to.
Kirby has another question.
Yes.
Concerned with whatever hopes, plans, desires are made, that, so, probably we have in, in agriculture, we're running horses, and it I don't plan, I really hope that doesn't ever change for the future, cause it's really handy, do we have to be in any way fearful of this going through, that at any point that will be taken away from us?
No.
Yeah, we can't take it away.
Well, is there any fear at?
They, they, I know that, like, well, not that you take the property away, but that the zoning, but then changed to where
Oh, and, and, yeah, like ants.
Then it's changed to where we can't, cause we do have.
Kirby, aren't you grandfathered in though?
You guys are grandfathered in, Kirby.
Yeah, but people who are, are.
We can't, we can't take that away once it's grandfathered in, it's been there for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
And I was told you cannot take anything that has been grandfathered in.
Even if it's during.
We can't take it away?
Area is re-zoned.
No.
And what about what your horses would be beating on yet, is it gonna make them sick?
There, there's nothing.
But so is the water, I'm all stressed about that part.
There're not, there's nothing discharged on the ground, at all, nothing.
Unless there's a leak.
Unless what?
There becomes a leak.
Then you're gonna get, you're gonna get one or two things if there's a leak, you're gonna get raw water, which is what everybody has in their house right now, or you're gonna get clean water. That's what you're gonna get.
That's just a filtration plant there. Just a filtration.
This isn't, this isn't a sewer or anything, that's just the average trick of water drinking water.
No, it's just kind of the noise and the ice or.
You're not gonna get noise. It's a very quiet building, if they end up building a block building.
And the pictures up there are what she's trying to get it to look like?
This'll look better than City Hall.
My ho- my only concern now is the continuous building on, on that property.
I, I feel that the town needs.
I understand that.
I mean, you know, I, I agree, we need that.
Need a plan and what, for, say, twenty-year plan or a fif- at least fifteen-year plan for that property, and something that we have to work with, or you.
I, I'll work with the council on that, I think that's a fair ask, um, I'll work with, I'll work with the town manager and the council on that, we'll, we'll come up with something.
What happened with the property Anderson had provided for you?
That's on Well Nine, and it will not fit there.
And it won't fit there?
Nope. And that's even more in the residential area than where we'll put it.
Where was that at?
Right at the corner of Second and House.
That's where the, that's where this.
That's where Well Nine is.
Yeah, oh, right, that way to the lawn.
Right there. That's even more in the residential area.
Maybe, you know, maybe the, the, the solution is kind of a compromise, you have more land than you need for this project, even if this is the very best site for lots of demonstrable reasons, right, but then you've got a big piece of empty land, maybe the, the plan for the whole twenty-one acres could include things that will enhance the neighborhood, not make people nervous, like parkland, right, if you set it up as, you know, a, a buil- a beautiful building at the south end of this lot, and the rest of it takes advantage of the wetlands and the, uh, tendency to flood, and, you know, public, uh, open space, you know, i- if you did that as part of an entire project, then maybe the, the neighborhood says, okay, well, that's a reasonable trade-off, because having a park right across from your house i- is not gonna hurt your property.
No.
It's probably gonna help.
No, that'd be good, now why, so then why can't you take this building you're gonna make and put it over by the railroad track?
That's where, that's where, that's where, that is the plan.
The building will be fine.
The building's gonna be in the very bad part of the property.
That, that actually true.
Okay, and if you guys can guarantee that you're gonna build a park across the street from our houses.
That's the suggestion.
That's the suggestion, Calda, what we're worried about, more buildings coming in, in the future, and just keep going.
Turn it into the city dump like it is right now.
Well, not the city dump, but just more buildings that.
And that area too, Calda, that you're talking about on the corner, the area that you're talking about on the corner with all the crap pile there, that makes me mad, cause I drive by it all the time, and that's gonna get cleaned up.
It's, it's ugly.
See, I don't mind the corner where they're bringing it, you see, it looks like they're already starting.
Sand, and sandbag.
They're bringing one truck after another today already dumping over there, and so, that just dirt piles, sand piles don't bother me.
It's all the other stuff that's piled there.
And you get right next to where that round piece of cement is, everybody throws the bikes over there, and the rotten cop tars over there, yeah.
That's, that's supposed to get all, that's gonna be getting all, not supposed to.
Yeah, we've looked at it for years.
And you can deal with that by, by fencing, you know, good fencing, I mean, there's ways to deal with it.
I have a fourth answer now.
Not you.
Hang on.
I got a hand, everybody talking over top of me.
Yeah, hang on, Scott over here has a question.
Do you have a question?
I, I just wanna clarify and make sure I'm understanding, uh, the exact location that we're talking about. So basically, we're talking about the several pieces of matter of the property that would be adjacent to the railroad tracks and Jeff and Paula Christiansen's property, correct?
That's what I'm.
I'm not sure where Jeff and Paula Christiansen's property is.
In that trailer park.
So with the, this corner right here.
This is the answer, yeah, it's gonna be, I'm not saying right up against the park, but it's gonna be right in this, this area right here. We don't wanna build, we don't wanna put anything right here that's gonna affect these people, we don't wanna build over by this subdivision. We're trying to not to be right here directly in front of these houses, and we're trying to stay away from the Flynn's property also, because, well, the one thing, that's all floodplain anyway. But we're trying to be a good neighbor and build a decent facility. No, it's not going.
So that's what I think we need to, it is in the southeast corner.
That's right. That's right, it's far back from where you guys are.
And then the, the rest, that there is not gonna become the hill deal for this amount of water, that's my view.
This is.
It's on this.
Yeah, so like.
If they.
Go up my hands, Cheryl, they're trying to.
Excuse me, I have things.
No, I was just trying to get orders into.
Okay, I'm right here, yeah, David's nine. That's the interesting, but then where are they gonna put the plant, over here?
It's becoming the only to emplace.
See, that part I find the to emplace, it was back here, and then to put a park, let's get a park going right here. It's gonna be by you.
I'm sad.
I wasn't trying to be unperceptual, Cheryl, I was just trying to get somebody's attention, and then only.
See, you're gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm in a conversation, I was just, I'm saying. But they need for, it's like, I know, yeah, three of the, well, we gotta do something else, it's like, wait, wait, that's what I'm talking about, it's like.
Right, we gotta get this hell with the bikes, because as long as we keep them over here in nineteen, that's why she's.
And it's not just that, it was all the ones, and it's just going in and out of all these places, so they turned off their water.
So, let me, let me just buy you a project, I guess, right now.
I don't know, Cheryl, we're just going to.
They went three million ounces.
So you guys, this right here is the concrete circle, we'll be getting, that area will be getting. This will be the entrance right here, it's a hundred fifty foot wide entrance between the trailer park and this piece of property, which the town owns this piece also. Kirby, this is your, guys is right here.
Yep.
And I think it goes from here.
All the way.
All the way to here.
Yeah.
Or, there's horses in there? Yeah, yeah, some are.
No, it's nice.
This, this is a trail right, right here. We're looking at probably right in here.
Right, directly across to the depot.
Right behind the depot?
Kind of behind, yeah.
Yeah.
There, there is a piece of property, I'm not sure who this is, there is some property right here. Yeah, that's right, Delbert and all this, but our fence line, right, and see this dark line right here? That will be the fence line of the property, and we're looking at right in here, trying to stay away from these houses, trying not to be right on top of the trailer park, and staying away from these houses, is what we're trying to do.
Question, uh, where you're planning on putting the building, uh, Castle.
Uh Castle House property, there was a O B L, those were O B L lots. Uh with all the streets uh vacated to him that's across there, because that would make shorter distance for you to get in coming off third.
That's a very good question and I don't know the answer to that.
It would be true.
Are you talking about right here?
Given though.
This part right here in the park.
Yes, uh that's been mentioned.
Okay. I just wanted to put it in my notes.
Yeah, I think right here the railroad.
Yeah, and then there's a little slipper property that went in between Castle House and and the and the depot. And we weren't allowed to do anything with it because it's kind of property and why not? But I know it's about acre or half of it. I mean, that would almost suffice if it could be tried like that. It's gonna be a lot worse.
Yeah, that'd be something for us to look into. You know, when I look at this, um it showed it had the hundred fifty foot opening here.
Right.
And that's what we look at.
And I get that that would be easier for hauling in trucks in there and.
Well, they'll they'll.
When it's when it's to build.
To build it and then um we'll probably get a load of salt every three months maybe. You'll get one truck in there every two to three months. A little salt would be the standard.
So why is this rock in this park explored?
The what?
Why did the often of this rock this park, why has that often not been explored?
Um, good question.
Could you guys explore?
That's for sale.
So if you own it, why are we spending money on it that we're tied on?
Didn't wanna really, part of it was my thought process, we didn't wanna talk about it was I just wanna take the park away from the town for a while.
The park is used a lot.
It is very good.
Just built and.
And then you've got.
I definitely appreciate that and being a resident right there, I completely know that. But I guess like again, looking at ten, fifteen, whatever year it sounds, don't you feel like that area, there could kind of be sectioned off where this would be a primary to potentially develop a park or something of that nature? Closer for many residents where the rock in this park is right around the railroad tracks and a criminal has no desire to relinquish her ground on the opposite side, which is all agriculture. Um, I just, I don't know, I'm just thinking of options of, it doesn't allow you to, you already own the ground, it's plus money out. It sounds like it's a more appropriate size of land for you to be using.
Kind of in and they're cheap, it's kind of in.
Well, the other thing, and I have to look at my floodplain map, is what drew us to this is how much of it's in floodplain.
We're all in a floodplain over there.
I don't think Serotimus Park is.
No, Serotimus Park is not.
So if we had to open.
I'd take one.
Yeah, but Serotimus Park itself is not.
I'd be running through my mouth if that is. If if it's not, it'd be easier to turn that into houses than it would be to turn this.
I would just think, I would be excited to see if that option could be explored just like Mike was saying, and that if we could see like an A B C just to, not that you haven't been able to go with this lighting, but not saying that of the slightest, but just to help us maybe see a little bit more, so you're saying like a pro con list of this truly is the best spot. We really have looked at all the options and found where this does make the absolute most sense to go there, especially since we do have some other openings in the area of property that are close to your lines and I think there's a lot of options in there. Well, if anything, we're kind of considering what Mike said, that's able to see an A B C or A B whatever.
What what do we have that's close to our lines?
To just work with.
Yeah.
I understand what you're talking.
Because Serotimus Park will be probably at nine and a half dollars to run a line to develop because of the business.
Is that more than the price of the property though?
You already own it.
So you're right.
You already own it.
Oh, yeah. They don't own that. No, they don't own that.
You're not on this Serotimus?
No, they don't. No, this is.
Serotimus.
Yeah, we do.
This one.
This.
Oh, I know.
Oh, yeah.
What are you gonna do with all the Delbert's trailers out there?
We're not affecting Delbert's trailers.
Cause it's on over from there.
Yeah, Delbert's trailers are right here on third.
Right.
We're building here.
No, it's gonna be parallel.
So but you have to drive through his property to get to.
No, we have a hundred and fifty feet right here as part of this property.
To drive in.
And plus we have this where this sits.
So part of the bars are out where we raise hogs and stuff up.
Yeah.
That's all part of that separate acre.
Yeah.
And that's where the entrance will be.
That will be the entrance.
Is where you, those little barns are. On Third Street.
I'm very.
Those are dangerous species.
Oh, dear God.
That's good. Yes, Scott. So um just some additional information to think about. I have been very concerned knowing that property was up for sale, that um potentially it was going to be developed for homes. As a resident of the Creekside subdivision and seeing the flooding that occurred there in twenty nineteen, it was, it's something that definitely has been on my mind. And so the idea of the property being purchased by the town and that it has this facility on it and that you recognize that that's a floodplain and don't plan on developing that area, that brings me peace of mind.
We have the natural drain right here. Like this is Creekside. There's a natural drain that runs here and like you said, this is where the worst of the flooding is right here.
And if there are homes that were built there, it would then push that water back into the Creekside subdivision.
Creekside, Creekside, yeah, that's right.
It came up with the road in the mind.
Yeah.
I was sampling and thinking.
Yeah, it gets.
Is there a way of developing that to keep that from being a flood zone anymore? Is there a way?
It's all, flood zones are all based on elevation. And the town and the county has nothing to do with setting up flood zones. That's also.
Well, it depends on which way they're routing the water. I've seen the water where I've lived routed by three different ways. And Ike Wells told me years ago, the best routing of the water is to let it go where it wants to go, which they they sold the depot into homeowners. So you can't do that anymore. So he said the second best is to let it run right down the highway and head right out the highway. He said that was the best flood he ever seen.
Could be.
Instead of trying to Mickey Mouse it all over, down through and and you like.
Through, try to force it to go.
Yeah, you've got places that flood that's.
And I, I mean honestly, the reason we look at this is how much of it's in the flood zone. We're trying to stay as far away from everybody as we could, but be as close to where our time is spotless. That that's the main purpose. If we get over it's Rockus Park, if we go over Serotimus, the cost to run that line out third, all the way down and over to here is gonna be over the mountain.
So were we given like billions of dollars to do this?
I can show you the budget. We have fifteen million dollars. The budget came in this morning. I had to cut two and a half million out of it to get the fifteen million. For this one. Because of the inflation and cost of.
Are we, well.
This could have been built twenty years ago if they didn't do it. Could have been built twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Well, I was supposed to have my sewage, city sewage water in nineteen fifty. I would bought it before and never bought it.
Question, that facility. If you did get it built, how many houses, everybody in town water would benefit from that water?
Really, I expect the city water will benefit.
Now, how about expansion? Should the town?
The town uses uh winter time right now, we go through about seven hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. Peak of the summer, we do about one point two to one point six man a day. Last being built to do three minute, right, three ninety for expansion. And there will also be room built, the building will be built a little bit bigger to allow us to even expand probably about another million gallons.
Not knowing the facility, your equipment you're going to be using, but what is the uh salt uh flavor or uh to go on your irrigating your lawns and thing like that?
The salt will never be in the water. The salt is actually used for generating the uh chlorine. It will go into chlorine for the dissection.
So what's purifying water then?
It's all done with uh media, media, raised hands and plastic beads. I got, where's my phone now? I have some pictures of a plant in Pineville that is pretty much what uh what we're building. Let me find this for you real quick. This plant opened ten months ago. This will probably. And and also you guys, we'll have another meeting on April nineteenth, which the engineer will be here. And the scientist that was hired out of Van that's been doing our water testing, I'm just gonna go through all this stuff.
DQ I heard was probably gonna.
But it's Amber Hudson, Hudson Land and Water out of Van. She works directly with DQ. She don't work for DQ. But she's done a ton of water testing in the last thirty days here. So this system right here is over here.
What's the size of the building, Scott? About?
It's gonna be about sixty to seventy by a hundred.
You make sixty.
So neither made out of uh company. They may have.
Is that right?
No, not more. ATAC, A T C, let me just do the math. See, the water running, the people. Water just comes in, being pumped in by the oil.
And that goes through the heat.
So there's no noise here except for the water flowing through it. There's a compressor in the building that'll make some noise, which you probably don't hear outside the building. That's about it.
It's your house.
But it's. Behind, right, boy. Which is. Environmentally safe, which all the grass, all the solids and water, the vitalating drops in it. Small, fifty-five gallon drum lines, five months.
Entities out.
And then it's a double basin, so.
Yes, so for you, all this was green space and I heard that. And a little bridge over the creek.
I did.
That's definitely.
I said.
This is.
This is, this is the building that private. That's true.
Is it in their residential area or is it?
It must not. I.
It is right in their residential, except right in the border of the residential area.
Like that flooded too, and I guess what my in laws about your yard.
Yeah. This is water.
So that's what it is.
Yeah.
So this is uh looking for right here. So all.
Right, I just. That right there.
So you could say people just work with it. I know those stuff. It just slowly start bringing it right down.
I think you're sorry. So it kind of, that's how it flows into it, but.
Yeah.
It's just.
Yeah, it's gonna be like.
No, I hope it happens now and it's not the. With that, yeah, you got this dump here, you got that dump here. So that's the.
And you can see the water. Every. That's same.
And that.
I wonder if some of this um.
Was still drenched. So.
That one too.
Yeah.
With the crystal there was drenched.
And so what ended up, so.
It's the problem.
So I was thinking where's the. It's what, if it's the. Cause it got me.
And that's what happened because the dog is, it just flooded out.
So what ended up happening and what we pushed is the water kept coming down in a specific capacity.
And well.
It kept coming down, which is right, and then it's sealed, but it's right, then there's another, there's another set. From here that it went to, and then it went. And then went through this water. So it took a. Just that, this is.
But see, now, but here's.
There is a massive. And then it's only. And you've got, and you've got another set of. There's two sets.
If anything, those. I need something.
Covered.
All that.
Thing.
It's.
We stand by.
And I have, I remember.
I live here and I agree with the.
Now.
Cause I've seen the. And then it's sandbagged, everything on, everything's channeled, the horse from.
So will.
Right down Center Street and then. So it's just.
Point of view, okay.
Cause I don't wanna be a. I wanna.
No, I get it. I I.
My mom's. I know, I know.
And that's why we're building in the backside.
It looks like they're starting to get, they're calling it. Cause this is what happened when he was assuming.
We have.
Cheryl, I was watching.
It's on that side. It's an.
So you guys have, oh, we got the flood map over there. Cool.
Oh.
It's like, oh, right. This is the piece of property right here.
Right.
This is the flood zone right here. That's zero. Half of that property is in the flood zone. We're looking at building right here, just outside of the flood zone.
So is the flood zone, is the flood zone.
Your flood zone, yes.
Why didn't they tell me when I bought?
Because they probably readjusted. They may readjusted the flood maps every three to five years.
My house has.
Everything. Their whole neighborhood.
I'm over it.
Their whole neighborhood.
Yeah, I know. I flooded. I was sandbagging like crazy there.
Hey, Cal.
Can you scroll?
In the front part of your house in the canal there, is there a pipeline through there at all still?
I don't think so. Melvin's doing Wilkin told us that my property is never flooded in the.
Street.
Um.
But if they flooded it when we have that flooded.
When they brought it down.
Third.
Street. Yes, and they brought it down Third Street and then they swatted it and then they switched it cause they started seeing all, it was never.
Protect the house.
But they said it was the worst like we'd ever.
See, here's Serotimus Park. So if we gotta come up with more residential area, it's easier to do it here because none of Serotimus is in.
I didn't refer to that, but just like for the regular, we do like, I I get that.
Yeah, if you stand back, you just see actually.
Yeah, we do, we do wanna have a pump under your house. I agree, but not, I get that, but.
I'm on F Street. My basement flooded back here too.
It's pretty, pretty cool. That tree really is.
So that, you know. And then again, here, we have a run pipe over there and that's where the expense comes in.
But isn't that, isn't that, that thing that they built up in the canyon supposed to keep us from the dam?
Yeah.
That's the first time in thirty somewhat years that since that's been built.
The conference breach.
I mean, that was the first time.
First time?
First time. Bill Schrader was part of that project and he actually passed it.
Alright, you done?
Yeah.
No, we find out.
I have pictures of that damn one.
Okay.
You did?
You guys have any more questions?
One question. Whose property are you buying?
It belongs to Five, Five Development out of Memphis.
Oh, it's not a personal property here.
It's not a lovely owned property.
No, it was owned by Kim Wilkin.
So to the developers. Cause that's when we had.
Yeah, Five Development is on that for at least fifteen years.
It's been sixteen years.
Sixteen? So Five Development's had it for sixteen years. So.
Yeah.
We have any more questions or concerns?
I have a, I have a, just a suggestion or a question, can we consider the whole, instead of just approving the purchase of the property, to stick a six thousand foot building in one corner, can we consider it as a hall piece? So that the neighborhood and the town could be comfortable that, you know, we, we kinda know what's gonna happen there. Uh, given that it's a flood prone area and given that, you know, there's a nice residential development on one border and there's agricultural use on it. I mean, wouldn't it make sense to say, this is the whole plan for that, we're gonna spend this much money to buy this and we need it and because of the engineering efficiency for the water plant, but let's deal with the whole site at one time, would that be possible?
It would be possible in the long term, but as the way our grant is, we're gonna run out of time eventually.
No, it's nothing to do with the grant.
As far as getting that built.
Nothing to do with the grant, right, it's a town process, right, we're not talking about asking, using grant money for development.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying it, we're on a time restraint with grants, you have a certain amount of time that we have to be in construction.
Sure.
But like, uh, Shannon was saying, a lot of that we've talked about, we haven't set any plans in motion or, or made any definite decision, we've talked about picking a park and a floodplain.
But if you could, if that's the basis for the approval, I mean, I think you satisfy a lot of people in this room about concerns, you know, adjacent neighbors, about concerns for that space, if, if part of the approval can commit to the town that this is.
A pretty little park.
Yeah, this is, you know, to be developed, you know, as money is available and, you know, our famous grant writers will get, get us more money and will build out the parks with public input, but.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's up to the council, I would agree to that, I'm, it makes sense, we show a lot of people, so I know show a country. But it, that's up to the council, but I don't see it.
But we have a lot of people walking out there that would benefit with the park.
Yeah, cause it'd be great to have some for kids to go do.
And. For the, for the kids out there.
Yeah, we guys would have to.
But everybody needs to search their souls and say, do they want this or don't they? You know what I mean, that's what's very fair, you know, no, but I mean, you know, these homes, you know, like down on, on verge and, and out here where he lives,
Pretty much all you guys would do.
Do, if that was one of you guys' homes, are you good with this?
I would, I would.
I, I would.
Mom, I got clean water.
We're fine, we're fine with that building, we need the water, that's not our, that's not our concern now, it's the rest of the.
Right. I would be fine with it, because I've been in about fifteen plants, since I started with the town, looking at these, so I was able to address your guys' concerns.
What will go on here?
It, what I'm telling you is not just something I'm pulling out of my head. The town, and I've spent a lot of time, the town has spent a lot of money sending me to different plants to look at these, to see how they operate, to see how they look, to see how the noise is, because we don't wanna be a bad neighbor to people around this.
I've got one quick, kinda adding to this gentleman's comment, is what I addressed a little bit ago, should the town increase in size, population? Can you put in a future for expansion of that building, so it doesn't have to come back, so you know, we know upfront that that building may have to be enlarged.
Say you add it under a hundred by sixty.
Yeah.
There, um, that building will have room to expand in it at the current size that we're building it. And we're also building it to treat almost twice what our maximum use is right now.
You gotta build for redundancy too, I mean, there's something that's, yeah, I just thought.
We're building, we, our highest that I, that I've been told, I have only been in town for six years, the highest water gallons per day we've used is one point eight million gallons, and that was the irrigation, everything else. We're building it to filter right at three million gallons. So at, even at that highest peak, we're building at one point two million over that. And then we'll be capable of putting another filter set in, which will do another eight hundred.
Under the same look, under the same.
And we don't have to worry about growth anyway, because we can't even get another grocery store, so. You're on a.
Different issue, different issue, hopefully if we get clean water, we will see some growth.
Let's hope, cause we got two dollar stores.
Can we build that across from you, Calvin?
Huh?
We got a grocery store, we'll build that.
Yeah, let's do that, hey, chicken builder, sit out right beside the plant. Yeah, I'm good with the grocery store.
All right, we have any more questions, cause we're, we're going way.
Just, it's just because I'm unfamiliar with, so the town buys that, if you guys choose to do different stuff with that land, is like you need to get a have a say or be aware of it, or is it just kind of you all, I need to do it?
No, it has to go, just like if you would have bought that property, you went and built it, it has to go with the.
Got it.
I might with construction.
So.
Actual construction of the building, I believe, I don't have my schedule or just, you know, I've been dealing with that all day today, but I think it's starting early twenty twenty-four and any mid, yeah, and any mid twenty twenty-five.
So eight, nine years.
I think startup is late twenty twenty-five.
Oh, you got time to sell your house, Dylan?
Well, I think it may be about putting a big humane society in my area and a deer sanctuary and.
Oh, God.
Well, you have enough over there.
Oh, my. I know, no, I only have one now.
Any more questions?
Thank you Scott for, for explaining it, and you, you made it very clear
Thank you, yes.
and understandable what is going on and where.
That's why I spoke to you.
Appreciate it.
You guys have any questions, don't hesitate to call me, I'll be more than happy to.
Cause you know, like, as long as, like, it's over and the noise is minimal, otherwise you're gonna think you have to sneak a doctor.
If we were to port it, it'd take you all the fries out so you can walk through their plant while it's running, and you can have a conversation, it's like two hundred yards inside the plant, and exit the filters.
Yes.
And there's, it forces water into those filters, it pushes them through the filters, it goes right back out.
I don't know the protocol.
They are cool, everyone's followed the words.
Okay, so when is the next meeting on this, like with the DDQ and everything?
By nine.
That is April nineteenth, and we will have the engineering firm here. Uh, yes, it'll be five o'clock. Uh, we'll have the engineer, engineering firm here, Troy from Anderson Ferry, this is where he does the water plant. And he'll go over the schedule and he'll kinda go over everything with everybody. We'll have Amber Hudson from Hudson Land and Water, who has been doing a lot of water testing here, and she's gonna go over that and explain to you guys exactly what's in this water. She's done more testing than this town has seen in probably fifty years. And she's gonna go over exactly what's in this water and answer any questions you guys have about what it is.
And you guys don't think this'll stop the construction that's over by, by him and that, you know, the new big cul-de-sac area that their Obama gens live and stuff like that? There will still probably be some construction and building there, or are they not gonna be doing for that?
As far as, on that twenty-two acres?
On that, where, yeah, like.
She's, she's talking about Creekside.
Yeah.
Oh, Creekside, Creekside, wow, those are ready to go, those are ready to go.
And eagle, whatever.
The biggest problem I think, my personal opinion, the problem with Creekside is when they redid the FEMA map, after that's in the flood zone.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
The whole bottom section that's not built on yet is in the flood zone.
That's right.
So, and that, we'll have, we'll have this phone with what, with radar, which will check all the elevations. And we'll send that into FEMA, and if we can pull some of that out, we're gonna try, but it's FEMA's decision, it's not ours.
Okay, we're just gonna stay calm about this.
But just, don't hesitate, Calvin, don't hesitate to call.
Okay.
Don't hesitate to call, any of you, don't hesitate to call me, if you have any questions or concerns, please call me.
Yeah.
We'll definitely talk about it.
So when, like you said, you would make a plan to where you wouldn't build on the rest, you would work with, with the people, when would that happen? And when would you present it to us?
Well, that'll have to go through council and everything else, we'll look at that and see what.
And you will let us know?
That, well, nothing will be built on there, just like we're.
Well, I know, it's gonna be a long time, but I.
But no, nothing, no, no, on there without talking to the public about it, we can't just sneak in there and build it.
Well, what you could do.
Well, they started building on that one, but they moved over on to Stock Street. They already had, they already built.
Yeah, for, yeah, stupid, that was, that was approved, and then they realized where they approved it for, and then the council said, uh-uh.
And nobody said a word to us on that one.
Oh, really?
So this, I just happened to hear about this.
No.
We started watching them building, we're like, whoa.
We're like, what's going on?
What, what, hell, it's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Thought we needed to move on.
We're hitting that.
Okay, I'm out of here.
All right. Thank you, if you have any questions, call me.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. The kids are like, we're out of here.
All right, we'll close up in this period. Um, we'll go back to before approving the purchase of the property for the water treatment facility. There's a motion on four.
I'll make a motion.
Um, was there a change to the agreement, I need to know what the.
The change was that it had the, the closing costs, um, we are paying for the title insurance policy and the seller is paying for all of the rest of the closing costs, that's the change.
Okay.
Oh, that's not normal, normally the seller is the one who, who warrants title.
I know that's not. I know that's not normal, but that's part of what, who was requested by seller. And, um, then, uh, if, if, if there's anything else that comes up with this property, it would, um, I would like the council's approval um, to sign for that, if there's, um, if there's anything that needs to happen additional to it, or if there needs to be, uh, it's nothing to do with money, but with maybe the land use might come up, I don't, I don't know. I'm, because this property was part of a pre-tried development, what we're buying is phase three and four. Phase one and two have been developed. I've looked for all of the paperwork that I possibly can find to see if there's any sort of unknown land use approval for phases one and two.
Sorry.
Nothing that I can find, although the seller is wanting to just make sure that if there's something that I haven't been able to find and I've been digging through everything possible, um, that the town would not hold him liable for what is happening in phase three and four.
And the development group also cannot find anything where anything's.
So do we need one of those, uh, that we did, like, a meeting with our attorney where we will. I asked and he said. Plus an approval, plus allowing you or the attorney to make. It would be myself or the attorney or mayor. Um, in case I get some weird thing happens, there's a.
Is it or or and?
And. And or. Um.
Manager or mayor and attorney, correct.
So, um, it, it, um, has been an interesting sale. Um, I did get Jimmy Karen on the phone for about forty-five minutes to talk to her of, about where I might vote for more paperwork for phase one and two and three and four, so that I was absolutely certain, um, so this is just a precautionary. And those are just the two things that, um, added in, uh, two point four. That's it. Okay, I move to vote to approve the purchase of the property for the water treatment facility, the purchase and sale agreement as presented. And, um, allow any changes that, um, may be made in the future to be approved, must be, need, must be approved by the town manager or mayor and our attorney, correct.
Motion made, Shannon, come to the favor.
Hi. Nothing here each. Hey, staff, anybody have any more comments? Council, anybody have any comment? Here in there, then we'll, uh, turn to meeting at six o'clock.
Is that something?
We're gonna meet next week.
Yeah.
You're gonna meet next week, yes, there.
Hey Kirby.
Hi Kirby.
Council.
Is it there?
Well, we need some.
They're ready. It says it's stoke.
They know it's not, cause it's stoked.